I call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Can I have a motion to certify closed session, please?
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Have a second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Cerza, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Thank you, closed session has been certified. That moves us to the public hearing on the Capitol Improvement Plan. Before I open the closed session, I just want to say, to our knowledge, we do not have any cards to speak directly to the Capitol Improvement Plan, so I'm going to open the closed session, and, I'm sorry?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, sorry, why did I say that? Yeah, the public hearing, thank you, Mr. Kelly. And offer opportunity for anyone who wants to come up and speak specifically about the Capitol Improvement Plan, if there's no one, we'll go ahead and move on to our meeting, at which point later on, there's a Citizens' Comments section, which we have ten cards for, so. With that, I'll open the public hearing on the Capitol Improvement Plan. We don't have any speaker cards, but in the event that someone would like to speak, is there anyone who would like to speak specifically to the Capitol Improvement Plan? All right? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Ms. Cerza, will you please call the roll for the meeting?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Ombi.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here. Thank you. Can I have a motion for approval of the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, I move approval, the agenda is presented.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Cerza, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. The agenda is approved. Brings us to 5.01, Announcements and Superintendents Report. Dr. Heron?
Evening, Madam Chair. This week is Farm-to-School Week in Virginia, and division schools will be celebrating in a number of ways. One is crunch heard round the Commonwealth. On October 4th at 10:00 a.m., schools throughout Virginia are encouraged to show their support and make some noise for farm-to-school efforts by crunching on a Virginia-grown apple.
That's cute.
WJCC through Child Nutrition Services and SHIP has a number of partnerships with local growers that encourage healthy eating and help students learn where their food comes from. WJC has been selected to participate in a school counseling RAMP cohort in collaboration with the College of William &amp; Mary School of Education. RAMP is a recognized American School Counselor Association national model. The purpose of this program is to provide training to local school counseling departments and apply for the RAMP Award in two years. The RAMP designation demonstrates that a program has made it through a rigorous peer-review evaluation process and is an exemplary school counseling program. This cohort will meet once a month with faculty members from the College of William &amp; Mary and guest leaders from the school counseling profession. And finally, a reminder that this Friday, October 6th, is our 5th Annual Manufacturing Day event. Throughout the day, local manufacturers in Williamsburg, James City County, and surrounding areas open their doors to demonstrate modern manufacturing and open students' eyes to a wide variety of manufacturing careers. Those are all of the announcements I have this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Anyone else? With that, it brings us to 6.01, Citizens' Comments. Mrs. Taylor recently informed us that we have ten cards, so everyone tonight will get three minutes after Ms. Hummel provides instructions and Mrs. Taylor calls your name.
Okay, so this is the time when citizens who have submitted speaker cards are invited to address the board. Speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their name for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. Each speaker is allocated three minutes, and time cannot be yielded to another speaker. Personnel matters are not discussed in open school board meetings, and we ask that you refrain from making reference to any specific individuals. The Board is interested in hearing all comments fully and requests that citizens refrain from verbal outbursts, applause, or any other type of demonstration. Although the Board does not respond to comments at this time, please know that we are listening and we appreciate your time. Thank you for adhering to these guidelines, Madam Chair. My directions are concluded.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel.
Laura Atkins.
Can you keep time? Thank you.
Members of the School Board and Chairman, thank you for allowing this public forum. My name is Laura Atkins, and I am the mother of a kindergartner. I am previously a clinical social worker from St. Louis, Missouri, trained out of an area near Detroit, and I can assure you that the issues that are being addressed here are also being addressed around the nation. Assessing community needs of a school board should be local to the community's residents and economic opportunities. We have before us an opportunity to redistrict, an opportunity that may win on diversity but fail in academic culture and capacity. Being diverse is not enough. We are becoming an increasingly transnational and international society, but classrooms, meaning instructors, need to have the tools to teach students how to critically think about their experiences. Digest and create new pathways, hiring new teachers along these routes help, but, and ministering structured needs to make curriculum an educational priority. Otherwise, students will miss the opportunities to constructively learn. Reaching 100% at all three high schools will be achieved in less than five years. If housing prices continue to rise, it will be a challenge for anyone to achieve the diversity that we seek. Among these changes, a resource of an unworking parent committed to school culture becomes a working parent. Without this, we fall into traps, traps that we see similar in other areas of the country. An area that I previously lived in was suburban Maryland, where majority of the parents had to work in order to afford their house, to send their kids to school, and challenged the schools then to take care of their children and their educational opportunities. We need to get an adequate community picture, and involves understanding how many military families and federal families have someone deployed, needs assessments about medical debt, and under insurance, part-time employment rather than full-time employment, and so forth. How many counselors and psychologists are structured to each school and high school? Are they able to fill this gap? It has been my experience that one psychologist and four counselors in the schools does not hit the mark. It probably doesn't hit anywhere close. We have an opportunity to do it right, to boost educational impact and limit negative influences, to hone the problems of educational bias and affluence, and generate meaningful conversation. We have a chance to do this, we have a chance if it's in four years, if we take the time. If we do it now, if we rush it, we're going to miss a lot of marks, and we'll be doing this again. Thank you.
Ms. Atkins.
The Crushwitz?
Madam Chair, School Board members, my name is Catherine Crushwitz. I confess I do not have children or grandchildren in Williamsburg, James City County, but my professional life, I am Executive Director of Alternatives, which is a youth development nonprofit that serves children on the Virginia Peninsula and James City County in Williamsburg, as well as on the Advisory Group for the Virginia Department of Education and an Advisory Group for the U.S. Department of Education as it pertains to 21st Century Community Learning Centers. I am passionate about educational equity. I believe that there should be equal access for all children, no matter what their socioeconomic background and their station in life. That should not in any way prohibit their academic achievement or their ability to be exposed to opportunities. With that being said, though, I do not support redistricting as a strategy to achieve educational equity. I feel like that it is a disruptive strategy that disrupts community, it disrupts neighborhoods, it disrupts relationships, and so therefore those two are critical for academically at-risk children. I rather support really looking at how do we make quality after-school and summer learning affordable, and how do we make it free for children that are at the poverty level. Academic after-school enrichment increases both family wraparound services, it provides enrichment opportunities, and in all helps children to gain and to learn better and to address the equity issues, so, thank you.
Travis Guze?
Guzy.
Guzy.
Thank you.
Dear members of the Board, thank you for the time to be able to address you tonight. My name is Travis Guze, I am a resident of Greensprings West, I have a junior at Jamestown High School. I'm a pastor, I'm a life and executive coach, and currently working on a dissertation for a doctoral program in coaching focused on coaching for empowering millennials to discover and live out their meaning and purpose in life. I have a deep passion for investing in young people. And part of what I want to share tonight relates to that and also the criteria for consideration for possibly redistricting the high schools. And some of this comes out of a personal experience in my life and why I'm so passionate about this. I grew up economically in a family that was not very well off. We had welfare, government cheese, there was alcoholism, my mother was doing crack cocaine. My mother even told me when I was in seventh grade that if I wanted to be a drug dealer, that'd be okay with her. And so I wasn't set up for success. My mother and my stepfather divorced, I got shipped off to my grandparents, and while heartbroken, it was one of the best things that ever happened to me because it provided desperate stability that I needed with their love and care in life. My first grade, of eighth grade, I got three F's, a C and an A, and the A was in PE because I could run well. I was not set up to be able to achieve academically. There is no school at that time of my life that you could have put me in that I would have done well, because there were so many other things that I needed. I needed stability at home, I needed to believe in myself and have people invest in me that I had value and worth, and could have a future different than what I had experienced. And I needed people to invest in me in read and study skills so that I could succeed academically. In fact, I did not get that until I went to Boise State University on a track scholarship, and yet again failed academically. And it wasn't until I went to a read-study skills class that I got some of the necessary skills to be able to succeed academically. I do think that there are some students that, if you redistrict, that they will benefit, but there are many others who, the problem is much deeper, and I don't think that we can consider that this is just a quick fix that is going to solve all the problems. There are investments with churches and ministries and nonprofit organizations that had needed to strengthen families. There are the needs in the community to invest in young people so they can believe in themselves and see a future they have. There are resources that are needed to give, to give those academic skills that are so needed so that they can achieve in life as well. I think the problem is multifaceted, and my encouragement to this Board is, let's consider making the change at the right time. We obviously, with a growing community, we needed a new middle school. We need a new high school as well with the growth that's happening. I think there is a time in which it makes sense to take in considerations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Janine Colorossi?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, everybody else. Also a licensed clinical social worker, by the way. Not a numbers person, I don't generally do graphs or charts or math. I tend to just use common sense, which is what I'm stressing to the Board to use when considering redistricting. So what makes the most sense to me? Not rezoning at all makes the most sense. Keep kids where they are until a thoughtful, permanent solution can be reached. Not making hasty decisions does not make sense. And isn't that what we tell our kids? However, if it must be done, proximity makes sense. Proximity should be the number-one consideration when it comes to what schools kids attend. Proximity to the schools of their choice is what drives people to make the largest purchase of their lifetime, which is their home. Proximity makes sense particularly in a school district that already has a transportation crisis, nobody is addressing that or saying it out loud. We can't get kids to school efficiently when the school is two miles away. Not really sure how it's going to be proposed that we get kids to schools that are quadruple that distance from the school they go to now. The further away from schools, the less time kids are spending at home with their family, the earlier those high school kids are getting up. More time driving on the road, leading to traffic, congestion, potential hazards, accidents. What else makes sense to me? Leading by example. These kids have it drilled in their head, I assure you, day after day after day at schools that we send them to, to make thoughtful decisions, to plan ahead, map out your plan, make your plan, think about what you do before you do it. That's what we tell them, that's what the school district tells them. Do not the same rules apply? Let's think about it. Lastly, personally, whatever decision you make, I urge you to use common sense and common decency, and please consider grandfathering all, if, all, some if not all, high school students. Some of these kids will be seniors. Imagine asking a senior to move schools, their last year of school, or juniors, or whatever. Their relationships have been formed, well-thought-out relationships that we have encouraged for years. Connections with teachers, educators, coaches, counselors, support staff, et cetera, all of whom play a vital role in either college recommendations or job recommendations or beyond. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. In advance, I thank you in advance for making the best common-sense decision for my kids and all of our kids.
Jeanette Gordon Weaver?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, I am Jeanette Gordon Weaver. I am a resident of the city of Williamsburg. Most of you are familiar with me by now, not going to go into a long biography about me. I am the epitome of every stereotype you've ever seen. I am black, I am a female, I am single, because I'm divorced, and I raised three children alone. My three children suffered through the first redistricting process. They got moved around and were in various schools. My three children also traveled a great distance to get where they had to go. All three children graduated from high school and graduated from college. My daughter graduating, the one I'm going to tout because everybody's familiar with the United States Naval Academy, served our country and has done all of the things she is supposed to do. Those things happened because she traveled over 30 miles to get to the governor's school every single day that she went to school. She also traveled down to Thomas Nelson to get to school because all of the requirements were met that could be met at Jamestown High School. I know it's an inconvenience, but when you want the best, you do the best that you can. Having said that, I want to commend Dr. Heron's office and all of you who took the time to listen to me about my concerns about Spirit Week at War Hill High School and the debacle that that turned into. There were children that were made uncomfortable with a meme or a picture that was sent out. I don't understand why there's a dress code every day, but during Spirit Week, there wasn't a code that was followed. I thank you for being proactive, Jamestown High School, although there was a police presence, did a wonderful thing in being proactive and making sure there were no problems. And I'm not sure that I agree with Lafayette not having Americana Day, but I do commend you, and I'm thankful, that they are proactive in making sure that what occurred at War Hill won't occur again. I thank you very much for your time, I hope you take what I have to say into consideration, and you all do the very best thing for all of our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon Weaver.
Leann Quinn?
That's an entrance. That's a mom. That's a very busy, tired mama. Thank you so much for hearing from me tonight. My name is Leann Quinn. I am a mom of two elementary school students. Our family just relocated here to Williamsburg about three months ago, and I'll commend you because we moved to Williamsburg, James City County because of the incredible reputation that the school system has, and we've been so excited for our kids to be a part of it. So of course, when I hear about all of the change and things that are going to happen, there was concern. Not concern over which school my child would go to, I have no fear, I think every school in Williamsburg, James City County is a fabulous school, but I do have concerns over proximity. If my child is two miles from a school, I believe they should go to that school. I don't think it makes any sense for them to travel double or triple the distance. There are safety issues. We will have young drivers on the road, they'll be going to school earlier or waiting at bus stops earlier. There have been many studies proving that children going to school at early hours are negatively impacted academically. So I do believe that proximity should be the number-one factor. Also, my major concern is that there's no long-term solution. So my kids are in first and third grade. How many times am I going to have to stand here and fight for their wellness and their safety and what's best for them? Because there is no long-term plan, how will I not be here in another three years, and then a three years after that? So while redistricting high schools is on the table, my question is why? All three high schools are going to be at max capacity, and there's no plan to fix that. So we're going to shuffle our kids around now, which is highly disruptive. To me, it's causing more separation within our community, which is very, very sad to me, and then we're going to do it again and again until we have a true solution. So, thank you for listening to me speak, and I hope that you would consider proximity and finding a long-term solution before we go through this difficult process. Thank you.
Welcome to the community.
Thank you. Leann Meyer?
My name is Leann Meyer. I'm a retired Army officer. I live in Greensprings West, and I have two children in Jamestown High School. I'm opposed to redistricting the high schools at this time. The debate has been about whether or not to redistrict. What I haven't clearly heard is why we need What I haven't clearly heard is why we need to redistrict right now. What is the impetus for the move to redistrict? If it is overcrowding, please explain why the current population at Jamestown High School is a problem. The students perform very well by all measures and all anecdotal evidence points to the sense that the students do not feel crowded. If the driver for redistricting is to rebalance socioeconomic disparity, what metrics are you using that demonstrate that simply moving students will be effective? How is moving more students into lower performing schools going to benefit the students by raising the student to teacher ratio? My children leave the house to catch the bus at 6:30 in the morning, 50 minutes before school starts. Going to school over three times the distance away, I expect they would have to leave more than an hour before school starts. I don't believe anyone is against diversity, but I can't see how prematurely shuffling the populations to achieve it now warrants the logistic problems redistricting creates at this time. In my estimation, the issue of redistricting is a solution in need of a problem. Thank you for your attention. That's my, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Thank you for your service.
Andrew Langer.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board. I am Andrew Langer. I'm a parent here in James City County with two children in the school system. And I want to speak tonight about both the issue of the criteria for redistricting and the redistricting issue itself. As far as I'm concerned, in terms of criteria, we may be putting the cart before the horse. Understanding, of course, that we have to redistrict the middle schools because we have a new middle school coming online, we need to be certain that with whatever criteria we're using, we're not harming more students than we're helping. That is very key. And it's why proximity, a number of parents have raised the issue of proximity. That's why proximity is so important. And then getting back and focusing on the fundamentals. If there is an achievement gap in the schools, figuring out why there is this achievement gap and then going and spending our time, our effort, our energy and our resources in addressing that and not in some shuffling of deck chairs, which does not accomplish the purposes that we want to accomplish. We all want all of the kids in James City County to do well. And my fear is that needless redistricting, both at the middle school and the high school level, taking kids out of schools simply because we're trying to solve some societal problem will harm more students at all levels, especially the most vulnerable, than it will help. And to that in mind, I want to focus with my last minute and a half on the issue of high school redistricting. A number of other parents have tonight talked about the issue and have wondered why we're doing it now at this present time, especially given the issue of the fact that we are reaching max capacity with two of the schools momentarily and we are at capacity with Jamestown. The reality is, we will have to take steps to alleviate that overcrowding, whether it is by building a new high school or taking trailers that we already have as a school system that are out of service now and putting them into service at all of the high schools and alleviating in that regard. But either way, we are going to have to, you know, if we do build a new high school, we are going to come to this same issue of redistricting down the road. And right now, if we do it, it will present a logistical nightmare. I was at the village meeting last week in which one of the parents at the village meeting raised with member Sandra Young, the issue of rising seniors. And I would submit that it's not just rising seniors who are harmed by this, but rising juniors as well, who are at a critical stage in their educational careers. You build the relationships that you have in these schools, you build the structures of support, especially if you're an at-risk, at-need student. And by ripping those students out of these schools, we will hurt them. So I would ask, as my time is up, but I would ask.
You have 22 seconds.
Oh, 20 seconds, good. And I would ask that you, that you.
That was someone else's.
Consider the equity when it comes to, when it comes to the middle schools, but that we do not redistrict the high schools at the present time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Langer.
Madeline.
Burnell.
Burnell.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron, my name's Madeline Burnell and I am a registered nurse at one of the local hospitals. I am thinking of what I wanted to say tonight. I don't want us to rush to failure. I want us to plan to succeed. And if we're going to do that, we need to think of a long-term plan for the future and the longevity of our school system. I implore that we ask Scott Leopold from Cooperative Strategies for the money that we have asked them to look further at redistricting, provide maps that we can give towards the Board of Supervisors in asking for the necessary funding for a fourth high school. According to recent reports, Virginia is one of the top 10 states in income, but in the bottom 10 for state funding of K through 12 education. When it comes to proximity of the schools, one of the concerns is teenagers driving. I used to work in trauma and it's not pretty. And the relationship between age and driving behavior has interested the highway safety researchers and administrators for many years. And it's generally acknowledged that the greatest risk of traffic crashes is among teenage drivers. Traffic crashes are the leading cause of death across the United States for teenagers and both men and women, drivers aged 16 to 19 years of age, have the highest average annual crash rates of any other group. So that is my point as far as proximity. I really think we just need to push the Board of Supervisors for the necessary funding because as everybody else has said, we're going, we're going to reach capacity. And the other thing is, I do believe in equality for all students. I think we need to take the appropriate resources and spread them out. Somebody else had said, we have some great schools here and we need to give the tools to the teachers and provide what they need so that we can bring everybody up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burnell.
Amy Clark.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to address you. I'll try not to take too much time because you've heard from me before. But I just wanted to, on one hand, say thank you. I know this is a long process and you all have been putting a lot of work towards redistricting and I appreciate those efforts. I wish I could give you a magic wand so you could build us a new high school. I realize you're, you know, the county holds the purse strings on that and that would solve lots of problems. I just wanted to kind of reiterate the thoughts from the village and the Huddle Group that I represent and a number of folks that think of the importance of the achievement gap and redistricting as one tool to solve that. I think that it's really exciting that we hear, while people might have different ideas on whether or not to redistrict the high schools, I think that in terms of building your own consensus, it seems everyone thinks that equality and diversity and spreading out resources to address the achievement gap is important. And so it seems like for the middle school level, that's kind of a no-brainer of trying to create that socioeconomic and racial diversity across the schools. In terms of the high schools, if you can build a high school in the next three or four years, yes, wait and redistrict then. But if you don't think you can do that and that the county isn't going to give you the money, I think this is an important time to address the capacity needs across the high schools and to, and to use this as an opportunity to equalize the diversity and across these important categories and make sure that the students that need extra resources are getting them, make sure that our white students are getting the benefits of diversity to their education for this global marketplace and, and, and making sure as a result that, you know, all of our resources are shared equally and that students, that all of our students can succeed, not just our more privileged students. And I think that I want to reiterate what many people have said, redistricting isn't going to solve our achievement gap problem. But as we've kind of, as we've talked about before, you know, this is one piece in the puzzle and I'm sure you will hear from the village as we work with you in the future that it's important for us to hire more minority teachers. It's important for us to work together, as the village is doing, with tutoring programs at Berkeley and James River and, and really strengthen our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Jacqueline Bridgeforth Williams.
Good evening. Hello, Dr. Heron, members of the school board. I'm Jacqueline Bridgeforth Williams, founder of the village. I just want to take this time to thank Ms. Young for coming out to visit with us last week, Ms. OMB who has in the past, Mr. Kelly. And we still have an open invitation to all members to come out and visit with the village. This evening, I'm going to speak about some of the things that we are currently doing. I know we're talking a lot about redistricting. The big concern for us will remain equity. We hear people talk about equality in the schools. We can make all schools equal, but we need for each student to receive the equity that he needs to receive. One of the things that the village is doing is being active in our community. We are working with the schools. We are currently prepared to start sending 24 tutors each week to James River Elementary School. That will be part of our tutoring initiative. We will also be sending tutors to Berkeley Middle School and also be working on mentoring programs as well. One of the things we know that the achievement gap remains, no matter how the lines are drawn for redistricting. I hear folks speak about proximity being important to them and that should be important to families, but there remains a double-digit achievement gap that is a huge concern to other families as well. And we just want to see that each child gets everything that he needs. We will continue to speak and advocate for the hiring of teachers of color because we know the advantages and the importance of teachers of color in the classroom as well and not just to students of color, but to all students as we introduce each other to our cultures and our communities. We know that it's important that that remains within the schools and some children aren't necessarily receiving that in fullness. And again, I just want to thank the school board for continuing to support us and thank Williamsburg, James City County. And we ask that the community come out and join us as we do the work to help all students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bridgeforth Williams. So that was our last speaker card, is that right? Okay, so thank you everyone for coming out and speaking and for being here. And that brings us to item 7.01, Proposed Agended Items. And this one is Discussion of Criteria: Considerations for Middle Schools with Cooperative Strategies. And before I hand it over to Dr. Heron, I just wanted to provide some context, just many of you will have heard this before, but just for the purpose of public, to remind everybody that since the year 2000, James City County has grown by nearly 50%. And that rapid growth coupled by the financial impact of the recession has made it a challenge to keep pace with building and educational infrastructure in our community. Consequently, most of the schools in WJCC are near, at, or over capacity. By state law, the school board cannot raise its own revenue and must rely exclusively on James City County and the city of Williamsburg for money to build schools. We can ask, but asking does not always result in funds to build new educational facilities. We are grateful to be building a new middle school that will open next year and we are redistricting at the middle school level to prepare for that. We hired a consultant earlier this year to assist us with this effort because we do not redistrict often and because a consultant can help us with best practice and bringing data to our attention to help us do it the best that we can. At the first school board meeting in September, we discussed the various aspects of redistrict to include disruption, feeder patterns, proximity, capacity, neighborhoods, and socioeconomic balance. Our conversation was informed by staff, by the consultants, by our own experiences with redistricting and our knowledge of this community and also our research on the topic in the news and in various journals. At our second public meeting in September, we hosted a public hearing and heard from roughly 35 speakers, is that right, Ms. Taylor? And then we got comments from 350 people online, is that right? 350? So there's been robust public input. So now the superintendent, informed by the board discussion, by robust public input and by the consultant's expertise, is offering her recommendation to us. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to you, Dr. Heron, and then we can begin our discussion after you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on school board member input, I'm bringing forward some criteria for your consideration discussion this evening. Three primary criteria have been identified for the development of draft zone maps. First of all, utilization, meaning promoting reasonable balancing of enrollment among schools to avoid overutilization or underutilization of facilities. This criterion is intended to prevent or eliminate overcrowding and allow for future growth. Second, proximity. Minimize the need for student transportation and keep distances traveled by students as short as possible. This may result in students attending their first or second nearest school. Longevity, another consideration, gives students and families a stable educational foundation and minimize disruption over time. Two additional criteria have been identified by board members as important in the process also. Socioeconomic status. The balance socioeconomic status to the extent possible as part of the process. And neighborhood concept, keep neighborhoods intact to the extent possible. I'm going to invite Mr. Scott Leopold to come up with this point in time from Cooperative Strategies, who's going to lead us through this discussion and present some ideas this evening as well. Thank you, Mr. Leopold.
Great. Nice to be back. I just, I just kind of want to start off, I want to kind of give us a sandbox for, a framework for this discussion. And so we'll be kind of crawling into some of the implications and some details about these criteria, what the trade-offs are. First slide I have here, this is just the, the current boundaries that we have. So the elementary boundaries are in the background, different shades of color. And then the middle school boundaries are the thick orange lines and the high school boundaries are the thick purple lines. And you can see, when we look at the high school zones, we have some detached, just some satellite areas. So we have the, the primary Jamestown boundary and then we have the satellite Jamestown boundary down here. And then we have a little spot zone here of Lafayette that is surrounded by War Hill and vice versa. We have some War Hill zones that are surrounded by Lafayette. The data that we have up here is utilization and free and reduced lunch data. And this may not match completely reports that you have this year because what this is, is this is great advancing students that we have from last year's data to next year. And so the numbers might be a little different, plus or minus 3% or 4%, something like that. But this is just to give us an idea or a baseline of kind of where we are today. One thing that we did take a look at, just because proximity is kind of rising to the top as a major concern, is we looked at what happens if we plug in the, the school locations and the student locations to the computer. We say, okay, send everybody to their geographically closest school, do not pass go, do not collect $200. And what this shows us, on top, we have the, the current boundaries for the middle schools and then on the bottom, we have what the, what the utilization and the socioeconomic balance would look like if everybody went to their geographically closest school. And so looking at the middle schools, what jumps out here is that only Hornsby would be at 23% if everybody went to their geographically closest school. Berkeley would be at 137%. Blair would be at 139%. Tawano would be at 91%. But if we look at the socioeconomic balance, you can see we have even more disparity here. We have Berkeley, which would be 21% free and reduced, Berkeley at 55, no, I'm sorry, Hornsby at 55. And then Blair, I did put Blair in this one, 58% and then Tawano at 28%. If we look at the high schools, we see a little bit more, more of the same, but, but, you know, we see that, that socioeconomic disparity increase if we, if we consider proximity as the only factor. And so what's important when we discuss this, to think about this, is that it's really going to be a trade-off between all criteria that we're looking at.
Leopold, before you move on. The lesson I take from this slide is that we are currently not sending people to the closest school.
Correct.
Okay, just to be clear, we're currently not doing that.
And there's actually some cases where now where people are going to their third or fourth, or your third closest school. They're not going to their first or second closest school. And so it is something that we can look at and analyze and consider as we develop options.
And the other takeaway is that if you look at Jamestown, if you look at proximity, you've got 126%.
Got it. And if we consider, you know, case in point, we've got, we've got these satellite zones and that's, that's against proximity as it is now. And so it's a difficult, a difficult goal to achieve. Next slide I have here, this is, this is just an example of a tool that we can use in the GIS. This is just kind of a first crack at making some planning units. So what we've done here is we've kind of chunked up the, the division into smaller geographical areas. You can see the, the background colors represent the current middle school boundaries. And so this is, this is Hornsby, Tawano up north, Berkeley, and then Blair right here. And then these bars here, this is an inverse distance. And so the larger the bar, the closer that area is to that colored school. And so, for example, this one, the largest bar is the orange, so this is closest to Hornsby. And so what this will really let us show is visually, what are our two closest schools here? So if we look in here, a lot of these planning areas in here are almost equally as close to Blair as they are Berkeley. And so this is just, just an example to show that we can use the GIS and the computer to kind of help us make those decisions and identify those areas as far as proximity and, and what the hierarchy is of their closest school. the hierarchy is of their closest school. Because like we said in the previous slides, it's not going to be possible to send everybody to their geographically closest school, but we can use this to help identify, all right, well, they're, you know, 1.2 miles from Blair and 1.5 miles from Berkeley. And so, we can absolutely identify those kinds of scenarios. The next map we have here, this is our socioeconomic student density map, and what I've done is I've separated the student population for paid meals on the left in the blue and free and reduced meals on the right. And what's really key about this map is it really shows us that we really have four or five concentrations or areas that we have students that have that high free and reduced meals, that high need. And so, where we move those areas has a major impact on the overall socioeconomic balance of each school. But we also need to be cognizant that we're not adversely and disproportionately affecting these areas and just moving these areas to make the numbers work. We have to absolutely make that a consideration when we're looking at the areas that we're This is the same data, but with the high school boundaries overlaid. I think what's interesting about this is that you can really see we have these spot zones in some of these areas and why those are there. If we look at the Jamestown main boundary, it's, you know, has a relatively low representation of free and reduced meals compared to the paid meals. But when we look at the detached southern boundary here, you can see where we get that diversity in that particular school. Yes, sir?
One of the concerns I've always had with the socioeconomic free and reduced issues is I believe we have underreporting in our high schools and our middle schools, and I think these maps kind of show that. As you go through, the middle schools has more than the high school, and I think if we went to the elementary, we would have even greater. And so I was wondering if there was any thought into mapping out the elementaries and presuming that those are more real free and reduced populations. And then as we go to middle school and high school lane, the students over, even if they don't apply for free and reduced, considering them at-risk socioeconomic at-risk students as part of our calculation.
We can absolutely do that. We can look at the elementary socioeconomics if we're looking at middle schools or high school boundaries to see how that works.
Because kind of what this shows is that as kids go through school, the families have less socioeconomic need, and I just don't believe that's the case. I mean, there's maybe a little bit of that, but I think there's a lot more of underreporting in the middle school and the high school.
My guess would be, since this is grade-advanced, we're showing a 32% at the high school, and that would be last year's eighth, ninth, and 10th graders.
Right.
And so, is the current free and reduced, is it lower than 32% at the high school overall?
I think so, yes.
So that would explain that, because we're showing a lower-grade cohort than is actually in the high school.
Right, so if we just use the elementary levels and call those our free and reduced schools, that's...
Sure.
My thoughts.
I agree.
Okay. And I just have this kind of in here for reference, so you can see, you know, again, why some of those detached zones exist. And then, just as a refresher, here's the current boundaries. The next few slides just talk about the trade-offs between focusing purely on one criteria. If we focus purely on balancing enrollment, we may not be able to have that socioeconomic balance that we're looking for, and we may impact more students than, you know, we would have to. If we look at purely balancing socioeconomics, we could be looking at imbalanced enrollment. We may not be able to meet those utilization guidelines that we're looking for. We may impact more students because we have to go further to make sure that we have that diversity within those schools, which also leads to increased distance. Students may not be able to go to their first or second closest school if we're trying to meet those diversity criteria. If we're focusing purely on proximity, the trade-off is going to be that socioeconomic balance, because we may not be able to find those areas that impact those schools in bringing that diversity even across the board, and also imbalanced enrollment. If we focus purely on feeder pattern, I haven't heard a lot of discussion on this, but we may not, what this is, is elementary schools feeding in nice chunks into middle schools and then up into high schools, and not having those little 2% and 3% areas that are splitting off and, you know, isolating small groups of students. If we focus purely on that, we may not be able to have that balanced utilization we're looking for. We may impact more students, and again, we may not be able to achieve those socioeconomic goals we're looking for as well. If we focus on minimal impact, I would hope that we could hit those utilization goals if we're going to redistrict at all, but we may not be able to balance enrollment as much as we want to. We may not be able to reach those socioeconomic balances that we're looking for, and the big one here is we're going to have decreased longevity. If we just focus on impacting the minimum number of students, there's a higher chance that we may have to come back and do it again sooner rather than later. So what are the impacts of phasing things in over time at high school? And what I mean by this, if we draw a line in the sand right now and say, okay, if you're in high school now, you're going to finish out, so it's a three-year process. So if we do that, we're not going to have any immediate relief at the high school level. We'll have a smaller ninth grade the first year, but that's going to be it. We're really not going to realize the full impact of that change in utilization until it's fully implemented three years later. Transportation's going to be a big piece of this. If transportation is not provided to all students that are allowed to finish at their existing schools, it may be perceived as a socioeconomic barrier for those who don't have the means to get to school. If transportation is provided, the number of routes may increase. This means either more buses and more drivers, or some very creative scheduling and start times to maintain the existing fleet size. We could be looking at combined grade levels on the same bus. As far as the fiscal impact goes, depending on the scope of the changes, it could increase transportation costs by 25% the first year, and then depending on the ridership, they may or may not decrease in subsequent years. We had a boundary change process in Fort Ben, Texas, three years ago, so they're in their last year of grandfathering right now. They had an $840,000 increase, which added 42 routes at the high school level just for this grandfathering process. It was a relatively modest boundary change they had. It was about 5% of the overall high school population. Their overall transportation budget is 24 million, they're a pretty large district, and this is 3.5% of their total budget just at the high school level. And so, that's a pretty modest change. If we have a larger change at the high school level that impacts 25% of the students, we could be looking at an increase of 20% to 25% overall, depending on how we implement it. If we're going to purchase more buses to maintain our existing level of service, or if we're going to spread our existing buses thinner and play with start times and routing. So what do other districts do typically? 12th graders are permitted to finish out at their current school, and then depending on the socioeconomic balance of the district, transportation may or may not be provided. I've got some clients that I work with where they're relatively homogeneous from a socioeconomic standpoint, so there's not going to be a big issue with disparity and not providing those services to the lower socioeconomic students. So that's what I've got. We can go back and we can crawl through this as we discuss, and we can pull all the slides up if you want.
So, just a reminder that we're talking about, at this point, middle school only for criteria, and then the next agenda item will be high school only. So I want to go through the criteria that Dr. Heron and Mr. Leopold have recommended to us, and then determine, thinking about the next meeting where we anticipate voting on these criteria, what that motion is going to look like, just the mechanics of that in a way that meets all of our collective needs as a board. So the first thing up is that Dr. Heron has recommended is this idea of utilization and promoting reasonable balancing of enrollment to avoid overutilization or underutilization of facilities at the middle school level. So, does anyone want to have, I mean, do we want to talk about that? I mean, I presume that means all three middle schools would be at equal percentage of capacity. Is that sort of what that means, Dr. Heron? Four, sorry, 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 four.
I think it's a balance between the balance of utilization and the longevity.
Okay.
Granted, that's another criteria, but the last thing that we want to do is have a scenario where we open up Blair at a number that we think is going to be good, and then the first day of school, we have a lot more kids show up than we anticipated.
And a lot little less wiggle room because it's a smaller school.
Yes.
Okay.
And so, I would say equal balance considering projected growth.
Mr. Kelly?
Well, as I look at the item, the agenda item here, the administration has proposed five criteria to us, and I guess they're in some sort of rank order, or no?
I think the three that I read, first of all, Mr. Kelly, would be primary criteria that I would recommend to the board to fully utilize our buildings and not have one that's overcrowded as we go through this process. Proximity to the school to the extent possible, and longevity of the decision that we make so we're not coming back in a short period of time to do the same thing again.
Right.
Those would come first. The board also expressed an interest in the additional criteria that I brought forward.
Which was socioeconomic and neighborhood.
Neighborhood concept as well.
If I look at those five in aggregate, I think I would probably switch longevity and neighborhood concept. I understand utilization. We can look into our crystal balls and use our Ouija boards and try to figure out where the county's going to grow, and we have never been really very good at that. We can say that, we can say in the high school level, we can have a different conversation, but we can say that we're going to have growth in the northern end of the county, and then in the center of the county. The planning commissions have come to us in previous years, and that's kind of where they said the growth is going to occur, in the primary service areas in the center of the county, and then with the land in the northern county, in the Stonehouse area. So if we look at utilization, for those schools that serve there, if they were a notch or two below the other schools, I guess I could kind of see that. You know, as 64 goes from four lanes to six lanes and we start getting significant growth here, I don't know that we can say with any clarity where we believe the growth is going to be for sure. So I don't know that having longevity being a significant criteria isn't really very data-driven. It's kind of more, this is where we think it's going to be, and we can kind of play with the capacity numbers a little bit to leave a little space in those schools where we think it's going to be, but I don't know that it should be necessarily an overriding criteria. I do believe that neighborhoods should be, I think that the county particularly very well identifies themselves by neighborhoods, and I think we should really honor and respect the way the county residents consider that and have neighborhoods be more of a higher level criteria. So I have no problem with the criteria, utilization, proximity, and neighborhoods, and then having socioeconomic and longevity as a secondary criteria.
Well, I would say utilization, proximity, and then bump socioeconomic up, because I think in this, the middle schools in particular, because of the proximity between Blair and Berkeley, they are so close together, I think we are at a really nice position to be able to balance all of the schools with, and still be able to send people to their first or second nearest school. And I really think that neighborhoods are very important, and I think that that's definitely a consideration and we should be considering, and that should play into it, but to relegate neighborhood above the balancing of the schools is not something I'm in agreement with.
Ms. Zombi?
I think I concur with Ms. Hummel, and so, and in my mind, we have our primary criteria, but we're not going to discount the other two, which are, so I'm all for moving socioeconomic status up, recognizing that we're still going to try to keep neighborhoods together because that is here. But I did want clarification with regard to longevity. What data would you use to try to determine longevity?
We would look at projected enrollment, the Future Think reports that we have. We've got a new Future Think report coming out, I think, in a couple weeks or maybe the end of the month.
But in terms of growth in our county, like, are you looking at building permits? Like, are you going to try to determine, oh, all of the growth is going to happen in the Stonehouse district? Like, are you looking at any of that kind of data?
We would reach out to the county planners and see what's in the pipeline, what's permitted, what's ready to go.
Just permits?
I believe Future Think looks at all of the potential data from live births to neighborhood growth to permits. They look at all of those factors when they do our enrollment projections every single year, and over the last number of years, they have been fairly accurate within a percent most years of their projected enrollment. So they take into consideration all of that information, and then Mr. Leopold's going to use that in his looking at longevity.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Mrs. Hummel. Utilization, I think, is very important. I have dropped the SES down a bit. I still think it's very important, but I think proximity, I understand that. What I, what we cannot anticipate is the fluctuation of revenue at the local and the state level. We have gone through so many [inaudible] falls, I'm sorry, shortfalls, and that has a real impact on what kind of funding we get from the state. And it's, and the assumption is, if we're going along with what we're talking about now, and the revenue's going to be there, you know, I can see us getting stuck a couple of years down the road when revenues drop off in the state for whatever reason, and then also drop off in the localities. That has a real impact on, somebody today said, "We have trailers in the waiting." Well, I'm not totally convinced we do have them in the waiting, and even if we do, if we get another downturn, will that have an impact on, you know, how we deal with it? So it's, that's a part that I haven't really heard much about, and, you know, and we don't talk about it because we don't control the purse strings, but... So utilization, for me, is really important. It's like, however we're going to achieve the balance, but I really think, and I agree exactly what you said earlier, that if, when we do, you know, when we create the enrollment for James Blair, if we don't hit it right, it's, you know, it's like, oh, man, that's just like 12 of the other schools, not 12, but so it's, it is really important. And, you know, I think the other, proximity, especially, you know, in terms of the middle school, I don't think that's a big issue because we have two middle schools that are very close together. So, but, you know, there is no crystal ball in terms of, you know, you look around at our, you know, neighboring communities, districts. Gloucester was rolling along fine, and when that, when the economy went south, there were so many bankrupt subdivisions that were in the process of being built, suddenly, everything stopped, it just stopped. So these are, this is really important. It's really helpful to see the numbers. What we haven't done really is, when you say 25%, what does that mean in terms of us, or, you know?
I think we said it could be up to a million.
It is going to be the money, yeah. I think that's going to be part of it, but I'm in agreement with, you know, the three or four folks that we've already spoken with.
Mrs. Young?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Mr. Kelly, and part of my thinking, except with the caveat that I really don't want 50% free and reduced lunch at one school. I would like to see that equaled out, except for the fact I don't want kids being moved all over the county to achieve that, and... to achieve that, and we already know we have a huge transportation issue. I certainly don't think that we can afford a 25% increase in transportation cost. I really, truly don't believe that. We are already having difficulty getting best drivers, and I think that's just a nightmare in the making. I don't think we should be, I don't think we can do that financially. First of all, going to the board supervisors and asking them for more money because we want to achieve this equality, I think, I think we'll get shot down, first of all, so I don't even really want to approach that. I'd really like us to do it as much as possible, but on the other hand, because if you look at Toahto, if you look at the map of Toahto, we probably should be moving kids up to Toahto, but that makes no sense to do that. And I can kind of see maybe where we could be going, and I, but I'll leave that up to the experts, but to me, keeping neighborhoods intact, proximity for me is very important, especially, especially if we want to continue with that idea that neighborhoods are important. And utilization, and you're right, we don't know, the crystal ball thing is huge for me. We can say, oh, this is the way it's going to be the first day of school at Blair, but, you know, we might have 75 people show up that we never anticipated. We don't know that. So I'd like to stick with, you know, utilization, proximity, neighborhoods, and then the other two. But I do want to limit, longevity is important to me, too, because I think stability for kids is incredibly important.
One of the other things, we've talked about it in the past, is if we only make minor changes in the percentage of free and reduced lunch students in our schools, and we have a disproportionate number in one school or two schools than some of the other ones, one of the things that we have talked about is, and, you know, there's going to be, there will be resistance to this, but to increase the resources, the funds for those schools will mean they're going to have to come from somewhere. And, you know, I don't know how like Jamestown parents would feel if some things got reduced over there because Lafayette needed additional resources that they don't have now. So it's, it's all very, everything, it's like, all these things are connected.
I do think it means, oh, sorry.
Yeah, Ms. Taylor, can you talk, give us your thoughts on middle school redistricting? That'd be great.
Since everyone has already so eloquently touched on each one, and given a lot of the thoughts that I have as well, I do agree with the criteria as they're presented to us this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Zombi?
I just wanted clarification with regard to the 25% increase in transportation cost. It was my understanding that that was presented for our information if we were to consider phasing in 10th, 11th, and 12th, that that has nothing to do with socioeconomic status.
Or middle, or middle school.
Or middle school.
Or middle school.
Correct.
So, okay, just wanted, so.
No, I understand that, that if we're talking about moving large numbers of children to areas where we could.
It could make bus routes actually more efficient, actually.
It's more efficient. It actually could. I think the maps will be able to show us that it's going to be, it's not going to be a negative impact on transportation to achieve.
For the middle school.
For the middle schools. I'm not talking about high schools here. We're only talking about middle school.
Right, and I do understand that.
Mr. Kelly?
So going back to the neighborhood concept and the socioeconomic issue, I really, I do advocate for the neighborhood concept being, and longevity taking swapping. However, there has, there is, there has been a conversation across the community about the utilization of resources and where the resources should go, which is why I don't know that, I don't know that we should, we should try to aim to make socioeconomic the same in every school. We should, as Mrs. Young said, balance it as best we can, but where we can't, I think that's okay. But when we start looking at funding in the spring, we need to look at not only free and reduced lunch, we need to look at achievement gaps in the schools and all of the other signs of success on how we fund the schools. And if we have to take, if we have to take, right now, we're kind of on a per capita basis, and if we have to do that differently, I don't think there will be an adverse reaction from the community, at least from the community members who talk to me. You know, if the Matocas don't get as much money, don't get as much money on a per capita basis as the James Rivers do, if the Jamestown doesn't get as much money necessarily as the Warhills do or the Lafiettes do, I don't think that there's a problem with that in the community. I think they understand you put your dollars where you need to utilize them. So that is why I would look at neighborhoods as part of the criteria. Socioeconomic in there is to balance as best we can, and then the longevity, because I don't trust our ability to read the crystal ball.
Thank you.
I don't either.
So.
Can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
I don't want to cut you off.
That's okay, go ahead.
No, but to me, one of the purposes of the Equity Series, which we've been so blessed with, is one of the things that shows out, and I remember that picture of those three little children, and really, one of the ways that I think that we can probably work on approaching the achievement gap is, and I agree, is taking some resources and maybe taking a look at the per capita use, and redefining what we want in our schools as far as resources for our children, because I want every child to have the best education, the best opportunity possible. I don't necessarily think that moving people around is the way to achieve that.
So, I, yeah, thank you. Thank you. So like Mrs. Taylor, I actually agree with them, the way that they are presented. But if I can kind of recap, I think, what everybody is saying, and see if we can't come to a place where next meeting we can adopt something. I think everyone agrees, sort of, number one is utilization, and proper utilization of each of the four new middle schools. The second one, I think people are in agreement in, is proximity, with the understanding that our schools are not located in a way that allows for everyone to attend the closest school. So as the way Dr. Heron has written this, it's sort of a first or second nearest school. The third thing I think I'm hearing, not unanimously, but I think majority, is socioeconomic balance. And I just have to say that because we're redistricting middle school, I would, I would struggle to support a map that wasn't very close to spread out. And if you look at where our poverty is in this community, and where the schools are, and where proximity is, you know, I think that's doable. I do not think that'll be too much of a challenge at all. In fact, I think it might make things actually, transportation-wise, more streamlined. That's just my opinion, but I could be wrong about that. The proximity and the neighborhood thing, I actually think, I am absolutely fine keeping neighborhoods together in general, and in fact, I think we should commit to having at least one map that keeps neighborhoods together, period, end of story, no exceptions. But I think proximity and neighborhoods may not jive sometimes, because we have some neighborhoods that are huge and that are divided by secondary roads in our community, where one side of the neighborhood might be farther away from the first or second school than the other. And so I don't want the size of a neighborhood that's divided by secondary roads to get in the way of proximity or utilization. And so if there's a tension there, I'm okay with a map that divides that, at least for this board to be able to make that choice. I don't want to cut that choice off. You know, again, I'm okay, I would like it if it's doable, and I want to definitely commit to one map that keeps, at the middle school level, keeps neighborhoods whole. But, but I don't want to be hamstrung by that. The last thing I'm concerned about is this idea of longevity. I take your point, Mr. Kelly, and I agree with you. We don't have a crystal ball. But I think it's incumbent upon us to say to our funders, we've looked at the data, and the data are telling us this, and based on that, this is why we have set utilization at these rates for longevity's sake. So I actually think that has to be in the top three, because longevity and utilization, as Mr. Leopold said, are so closely linked. And I hear you, and I agree with you, that we could do this today and find out we're all wrong in three years. In the short term, our projections have been pretty spot on, but longer term, and I think it would be good to know how we're doing longer term, Dr. Heron, if we could look at Future Think and see, look backwards and see how well we've done five, 10 years out, so we can get a sense of how much we can trust that. But I think not making longevity a secondary criteria concerns me.
I think we have done good, done well on our projections on the aggregate. I don't know if we have done well on our projections on the school or the community level, which is where your redistricting criteria is going to be at. So that's why I question our ability to look in the, look in the crystal ball. And also, if you're only going to have one map that doesn't divide neighborhoods, that's the one I'm voting for.
Excellent.
I'm not going to vote for a map that divides neighborhoods.
So if we, if I hear everybody, what everybody wants is utilization, proximity, socioeconomic status, and neighborhoods and longevity are secondary, is that correct?
That's your consensus.
That's consensus. That's the consensus?
Is it consensus that socioeconomic is third? I don't think that's true.
I think so.
Strappel?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
But I think there'll be an opportunity to take into consideration all of these criteria as the maps are being built. And so what I'm hearing with the middle school, that we will have one map that will definitely keep neighborhoods intact. We will certainly have one map that pushes socioeconomic status higher than neighborhoods or higher than longevity. Is that what I'm hearing? There'll be one that'll certainly balance that, and then there'll be some other options potentially as well. I think everyone will have a map that they can, they can certainly.
Yeah, and I think, we were talking early, there's this, if you want to go exactly equal on, it's not going to work. So I think it's being, it's.
Balance.
It's being reasonable and.
Common sense.
Common sense, as someone I think said earlier. It's just common sense that let's do what's common sense. But keeping in mind that we don't want to have a 55% and a 17% free and reduced, when it's not even, it's so easy not to have that.
I don't think we want to bring any options forward that make it worse than it is now.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yeah, in any.
In any scenario.
Any scenario.
And which is exactly why I agree with Mrs. Taylor, that I like them the way they're written, because I think that conveys exactly what, you know, what Dr. Heron just said, which is one option will, without, at least one option, maybe more, will absolutely hold neighborhoods together. At least one option will be closer socioeconomic status, and then probably at least one option will be kind of a pure combination of utilization, proximity, and longevity. You know, and the other two would tweak based, with neighborhood being a little higher, and the other one was, I mean, is that, is that a fair, I mean, so that's what's doable?
Yeah.
So is that, and then, and then, you know, and then you, I hear what you're saying, you won't vote for a map, you know, but I would struggle to, conversely, I would struggle to support when that wasn't more balanced, when we have an opportunity to do that.
We should have more balance, but not necessarily totally balanced.
Yeah, I, well.
And I would hope if, I would hope as we do the, as we do the, go through the criteria and the maps come out, that we don't have, aren't presented with something that just is a nonstarter from the beginning.
I agree with that. I think in some past redistrictings, there were some, like, ridiculous maps that came out to prove a point, and, and I don't want a map like that. I don't want a map that's going to be, oh, here's the map that has all the neighborhoods together, and, you know, I, there's a way that you can have, I would like the maps to be really hard to choose between.
Yeah.
That's what I would like.
Okay.
Yeah, and actually, I had a question about proximity, and to your point about crazy maps, I mean, and a map that doesn't look like a quilt. So, I mean, contiguous, what is, you call them satellite area, what do you, what do you?
Satellite or detached, something.
Detached. What's your professional thought on that with regards, you've seen the data, you know what our middle, we know where our middle schools are, you know where our people are, our children are. I mean, what do you think about that? You think that we have the capacity to do something that is contiguous and doesn't look like a?
I'm sure going to try.
Okay.
I don't want to create a satellite zone or one doesn't exist now. I mean, that's kind of that same concept. If we can make it better, great. We just don't want to make it worse than it is now.
It won't be hard.
That's true. Right, I mean, because we're already.
Might be surprised when we get the maps.
Well, I mean, I mean, I think the map of, where we are now, we're already not taking kids to their closest school. Currently, we're doing it for socioeconomic segregation. Right, I mean, that's just how we're doing it right now, and I would like to change that for socioeconomic integration.
That's awful big words there, Madam Chair.
Well, it's where we're, it's what the numbers tell me, so. So if a motion were moving forward, we've seen one option as a resolution, and we've seen, you know, we've seen this language in front of us. Do you all have a preference on what that looks like, in terms of what, do you want to just read a motion that says, these are the five, you know, three primary to additional criteria, and we vote on that, or do we want to do resolution? Yeah, so we just want to read it? Okay.
When are you going to do that tonight?
No, the next meeting. No, the next meeting. I'm trying, I'm trying to help Ms. Serza and Dr. Heron craft.
I'll just put it in as well, okay, so.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to, well, yeah, it says we're on this proposed agenda items.
Just a question. So, since we talked about these five different criteria, I mean, this, when we throw the socioeconomic and neighborhood on there, like, as a second thought, I don't really think it needs to be a second thought. I think it needs to be part of the criteria.
So five criteria?
Well, I think the way they've got is three criteria with two, like, additional criteria, and I guess I just think, just go ahead and have the five criteria. Am I wrong on it?
In my mind, it's focus on the primary.
Okay.
If you can hit the secondary and not break the primary, go for it.
But if the secondary, okay, so then I'd move my, then that would change what my primary is. That would change what my primary is. It would move the longevity.
So. So I heard quite a lot about moving longevity up or down depending on the preference of different members of the board. Would it be appropriate to bring forward utilization and proximity as primary?
Yes.
And then the other three as additional? Would that meet most people's, or I know, Madam Chair, you felt strongly about longevity.
Well, I don't, I don't feel strong. What I would like to get to is a point where we could get a unanimous vote on the criteria. I, you know, we're going to have three maps that we're not going to agree on, probably, and that's because there's going to be three choices, and everyone's going to have their favorite, and that's okay. But if we could, but if we move socioeconomic status up, then we're not at unanimous vote right now.
I could suggest that we just take out the line in the middle, put them all together, because the two criteria at the bottom say to do it to the extents possible. So inherent in the language describing the criteria is that this is really important to us, we're going to try to make this happen as far as possible, and then we could put them all in a group of five.
Is that something everyone can live with? Mr. Kelly?
One more time.
One more time, Dr. Heron.
We don't have to refer to the last two additional criteria as additional. We can put them in a list of five, because inherent in the description of the criteria is that we are going to do this to the extent possible.
The last two or the last three?
The last two.
So, okay.
You want to add to the extent possible on longevity, or as data?
Well, I mean, I mean, when we look at proximity, I mean, if he comes back with Hornsby at 28%, we're going to have, have a discussion, right?
I'm going to come back with Hornsby at 28%.
So that's, I mean, that's proximity, and so, and so utilization and proximity, you know, I think, I think it comes down, it comes down to the neighborhoods and the socioeconomic.
Mm-hmm.
it comes down to the neighborhoods and the socioeconomic, but, um, you know where I stand.
Yeah, I'm convinced we can do it all, Jim.
You're going to reach into your pixie dust for us?
I think we can too.
Okay.
Because of the locate, our locations are.
She's searching.
Yeah, I mean, as long as proximity is the second nearest school, or the first nearest school, I think we're okay. I mean, that's what, isn't that what's?
This is my, this is my proximity map.
Right.
And so I want to, I want to try to get the areas to the school that has the biggest bar, and then we'll go down from there.
Now, does this reflect density at all, density of populations?
It doesn't. This is just, uh, this is just a, it's inverse distance.
Okay.
Um, so, that's something that I can build into it. But this is just, I mean, it's going to be art. It's going to be taking all this data, knowing what to use, to kind of come up with these options that adhere to these criteria. And so, um, like you said, it's not going to be, it's not going to be perfect. We're not going to bring a, we're not going to bring an option that has Hornsby 28%, because it's, that doesn't satisfy the utilization. And that, that's what we have on.
Right, 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 right. I mean, I'm good with the five criteria. I would, I would, I would argue the order that they're in, but we'll, we can go to maps and see.
So, but we, so we want utilization, proximity, and then do we want to do, do you want to drop longevity down to the fifth one? Is that, would that, I mean, they're not, I, I mean, we could say longevity to the extent that data, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe we do that. I mean, what I don't want to, I mean, I do want to, um, appreciate the agony that everyone goes through when their children are facing redistricting. And so longevity, it's important that we at least as much as possible, try to do things so that we're not coming back and having to redistrict again, or be in a position where we are now with the high schools.
I think if we do utilization to the extent possible, and, and really focus on that, it should impact the length of time that the school can take more students. I think you can't do one without the other.
Okay, and this is, and in terms of longevity, it has been my operating assumption that if and when we add to James Blair, that then we would redistrict again. We're not putting kids in with the assumption that we don't redistrict when we add more space there, right? I mean, I just want to clarify that.
Probably so. Um, but, you know, if the growth happens in the mid-county where we think it's going to happen, maybe we wouldn't have to do a significant redistricting. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That if, if, if the growth happens where the plant, the James, the James City County planning commissioners in their crystal balls have said it's going to happen, um, we, we might be not bad, if, if it will. But then you got to worry about Tuana.
Okay.
Where, when Stonehouse and, and those, those parts that are a part of that six-lane highway start to grow, that might do some, do some things of the northern end of the county that we're not sure about.
So just to clarify, Mr. Kelly, you're suggesting we would spot redistrict when we expand the James Blair?
I am not going to tell you what we're doing in five years.
No, 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 I just.
I can assure you of that.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
But, but we will have to redistrict.
Well, that was my question.
Right.
But, but I think Mr. Kelly was saying maybe not as extensive.
I don't have the crystal ball. Others who have the crystal ball can look into theirs and see what they come up with, but.
Okay. So, um.
That's kind of a joke.
Back to what the motion looks like. Are we, okay, with just the five in that order with longevity last? Is that, I mean, they're.
They're not, are they rank, they're not rank.
They're not rank order, that's, yeah.
They're not rank order.
Yeah. But maybe a qualifying statement on the longevity to satisfy people who are, so just a, as the data, I don't know, some sort of.
To the extent possible.
Yeah.
Yes.
To the extent knowable.
To the extent our crystal ball, crystal ball shows us.
Sure.
Okay. So are we all, yeah?
So if we, if we do that, does, do you understand what we're looking for?
Yes. I have a good, I'm in a good, warm, fuzzy place right now.
He's painfully aware of what we're looking for.
I know what you don't want.
Okay.
Which is something. I mean, that's, that's good to know.
That's, that's a huge thing.
That's huge. No, and I want to thank.
Then let them just do some maps and then see if you got it right.
No, and I, I just thank you all very much for giving this such thought. And I think the more conversation we have up front, the easier it is for Mr. Leopold to do his job and to present to us, um, maps that are in the best interest of the children of this division and their future, um, learning experiences in our schools. So, all right. Anything else about 7.0 before we move to high schools? All right. Um, so, uh, before I toss it back to Dr. Heron to introduce her criteria for this, I just want to comment again that, that because capacity at the high schools is imbalanced, because the rapid growth we've experienced since the last high school redistricting 10 years ago has not aligned with our attendance zone boundaries. And because the cost to add a high school process to this, to Mr. Leopold's work was reasonable, we contracted with Mr. Leopold to develop criteria and to draw three maps that will depict three different potential attendance zones at the high school level. We, the board has not decided, decided to rezone high school. The board may decide to rezone high school, and it may not. That decision has not yet been made and will likely be made early in the new year, but is not being made, uh, this month. Um, just as a matter of reference for the community, we as a board did ask for more space to accommodate the overcrowded high schools and to allow for future growth, uh, in those high schools. But that was not included in the CIP that was adopted by the localities most recently. So now we're looking at redistricting as part of our due diligence work, which I think, uh, the taxpayers should frankly expect of us. Um, our funders should expect that of us as well. And options that we can look at as a board are redistricting, uh, adding trailers, uh, building existing, building space to existing high schools, or building a larger high school to replace an older one. The last three options, we cannot do without money from our funders. Redistricting is the lowest cost, cost option, which is why we're exploring it. Um, we may redistrict at the high school level to alleviate the imbalance at that level, but if we do not, and we ask for money to add capacity at high school level, is it, it is incumbent, I believe, upon us to do our homework. And that is part of what we're doing, so that if and when we ask our funders for money to add capacity, we can tell them what we've learned through this process, through Mr. Leopold, and from the vibrant community discussions that we've all been having. And so, um, anyway, I just wanted to provide that as background before Dr. Heron. Uh, if you would please present what you have for us.
Madam Chair, uh, the criteria are presented for high school exactly as they were presented to you for middle school. I think the board's already very familiar with them and the order in which they're presented. So I would just open the, the conversation up for, for discussion.
Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, first of all, I'm not sure why we'd have different criteria for middle school or high school, but, uh, that's, that's something we can get into. Um, earlier in the summer, uh, I did not advocate for that we should even look at high school redistricting. Um, and, and upon reflection on that, I was probably not correct. Um, the one thing that, that having this high school discussion has had is we have gotten community engagement. And I know all of us have had good conversation starters where out in the public, um, with people talking about high school redistricting. But, but I think the real reason that we did this is, is in the past, we have put high school expansions in our, in our CIP, and they have been rejected by our funding partners because, um, they say, why can't you just redistrict? So the question we have to ask ourselves, maybe not ourselves, maybe we have to ask our funding partners, is have we done that due diligence? Do you believe now that we need additional high school inventory? And when can we get that in the plan, and how does that look? So, where you say that, you know, it's not on the table today, maybe it is. Maybe, maybe we should, um, have conversations with our, with the supervisors and the county manager and, and the city council and say, okay, have we done our due diligence? Do you now understand that if we open, if, if all the kids were perfect, if kids were in the perfect spot, and we had everybody at the same capacity, we're at 99%, and we haven't grown, and so we need additional capacity? So, so I think, I think we have done that due diligence, certainly with the people that come to talk to us, they understand that we need additional capacity. I think the supervisors, um, have heard that. And so, the question is, should we even go forward with criteria at the high school level, or should we go into, go and have a discussion about how are we going to add high school capacity, whether it be expansions of high school, there'll be new high schools, um, you know, how, you know, maybe we can, we have, we have a next year CIP expansion of cafeteria at Jamestown, which is really going to help some of the crowding issues at Jamestown with just kids getting too close to each other. Um, so, I mean, I think, I think that's a question we really need to, need to have, is do we even continue marching down the path towards criteria and development of maps? And, um, just go to our funding partners and say, here's where we are, and I think, I think you've seen it, so.
I, I think that, um, we should, I agree with Mr. Kelly about the rationale and the criteria, that I don't think there should be any difference really between middle school and high school. Just whatever we had decided for the middle school, I'm fine for the high school as well. Uh, one of our speakers today talked to all of us about, why can't you guys plan things? Um, we tell our children to plan things, and we are in a position where our hands are tied. We cannot plan like we would like to plan, because our funding partners, we are reliant on our funding partners. So, we, I, I think this is a very good, um, community-involved process. And I'm urging all the people who spoke tonight to speak to their representatives on the Board of Supervisors and, and say that we, we need, um, more money to, to alleviate the overcrowded situation that we have. Uh, in the meantime, since, uh, we don't, then I think we move ahead with the criteria, we move ahead with the maps, and can, continue, and I think, and continue the pressure on our funding partners.
Ms. Hummel?
I concur with Ms. Hummel.
Okay.
I agree as well.
I don't concur. Um, first, first of all, I, I don't think we should be, I, I agree, I think we need to be putting pressure on our funding partners, uh, definitely, because to me, it looks like we need more space. We need more high school space. And I am looking at that utilization up there, moving one or 2%, I don't, or even 3%, I don't think it's going to solve the problem. We need space. That's the bottom line. We need space. And to date, and I, I think the school board has done its due diligence, I think we have tried to be accommodating, I think we have tried to work through different problems. We've, we've proposed additional space, which has not been funded. So I am not for going forward with any of the criteria. I'm, uh, would like us to talk to our funding partner and start talking about what we really truly need, um, which is more space.
Dr. Beers?
I agree with that completely, um, that, um, there's, you know, we could spend a lot of time now trying to sort of, out of, how to redistrict the high schools, but it's clear that we are going to need more space, and we're going to need it, uh, within the next two, three, uh, if not four years anyway. And, um, and it will come, and it's, we're talking about money, we're talking about revenue, we're talking about funds, uh, and not just the localities. It's also the state. You know, they do their biennium, and, you know, it looks rosy the first year, and then what, what happens the second year? Boom. It, it's like, um, and, and there's money in there for, um, you know, building construction, but if they, if they, it's, it's a, I don't want to say it's a crapshoot, but.
It is.
It's, it's a tough one. It's, it's, um, um, you know, it really is. And I, you know, I know the economy, that things are, you know, looking a little rosy, real estate in the, in the areas starting to go back up again, and, um, but, um, uh, maybe it's just because I've, I've seen so many of these swings over so many decades here. But I, um, I've, I totally agree with, um, what's been said, is that, um, I don't want to spend too much time on, um, high school redistricting. Um, I think it can be time better spent talking to our, uh, talking to the Board of Supervisors and the City Council.
Mrs. Young?
Uh, one, one other thing I want to point out. Um, I, one of the things that has been brought to my attention is equality of programs across the high schools. And I, I do understand that our principals, who I, I believe are amazing, and I, I, I truly appreciate them and respect them, but I would like us to start addressing the idea of having equality of programs across the high schools, so that students have equal opportunities to, and equal access to these programs. Um, and I do know that that, that's another cost thing, that, again, we're talking about funding. But to me, that, that seems like, to me, that would alleviate some of the, um, we're talking about an achievement gap, and I think getting kids passionate about their futures. Uh, I love pathways, and I think that is one of the ways to do it. I truly hope we get that off the ground for this coming school year. Uh, but I would really like to talk about equality of programs in our high schools, so that no matter which high school you went to, you would have access to the program that suits you, that fits your needs.
Well, I.
I could just say one more thing. So while I agree with that, I think that this opportunity, considering high school redistricting has given us an opportunity to, to look at equity and, and resource allocation. And I think certainly that's going to be part of our budget conversation in January. Um, I think that's a given. However, resource allocation does not mitigate capacity issues, and that is the reason why we're considering redistricting high schools. So I think we need to answer, I think this board needs to answer that question. I agree, we need to look at resource allocation. There needs to be some changes. We need to look at resource allocation, K-12, not just at the high school level. And there needs to be equity, which does not exist currently. There is equality currently, everyone gets the same, and that is not equity. Um, but we need to, we need to respond to capacity, which is, which is imbalanced at the high school level. And as long as we go down this path, the community is engaged, and they are talking to the Board of Supervisors. My fear is if we take high schools off the table, then everyone is, stops talking to their Board of Supervisors. Everyone needs to be engaged, and they need to continue to, to, to press the funding issue, which is, we need more funding.
Um, so I think, I, I take Mrs. Young and Mr. Kelly and Dr. Beers' point, and I, I don't disagree with it. Um, but I think we should move forward and look at maps. And the reason, um, that I think we should do that is we've contracted to do it. Um, and so I think it's, you know, a proper use of public funds. But I also think that it's part of our data gathering. I think we need to complete this cycle to say to our funders, to, to achieve the goals, we would have to move this many kids, and it would last, and, and for me, I agree the criteria should be sa, the same, but I, for me, longevity is the big number one. Because if we are looking at data, and we're looking at our projections, and we're saying to the Board of Supervisors, we have to move this many kids to achieve, um, balance across the high school and capacity for two years, that's a piece of information that we don't currently have now. And we would have that with maps. Um, that, and so for me, it's a part of the data gathering process. And, um, while I understand the idea of not moving forward, if it looks like the majority of this board is concerned about, as we all should be, concerned about longevity and disruption for a short gain in, in capacity, I just think it's part of our data gathering, and I think we need to be able to clearly communicate what Mr. Leopold can share with us when he draws the maps.
Yes.
You know, so that, that, you know, and I, and so I just think it's more information, um, and then people can look at, see what that would look like, and, and respond to it, and then, you know, share with their elected leaders what that means to them. And so, Mr. Kelly?
Madam Chair, I assure you, they will respond to it.
Yes.
But I think they've already responded to it. And I, I think the, the amount of energy that will be expended on, on maps and redistricting, uh, scenarios that we probably will not implement, particularly if it's only for two years, I think the funding, I think our funding partners get it. And that they know we need capacity, and, and then when we add capacity, we're not going to use those maps anyway, we're going to go about and do different maps. And so I just, I just think that, uh, I just think we're putting a lot of people through a lot of consternation that is unnecessary.
Well, and it doesn't mean that we have to go through a, a public hearing, and, because currently, we have not taken action on high school. We do not have to take action on high school.
Correct.
We do not have to hold a public hearing on maps, but I would like to see maps.
Give you information.
Because to me, it's data that we need.
Absolutely.
I'm not against that if it's just for data's purpose, but I am not for redistricting the high schools.
Is it for feasibility?
Explain.
Explain that.
No, I mean, you're, you're.
What do you mean by that, Mr. Leopold?
Like you said, due diligence. It's a feasibility study to see what would have to happen.
Yeah. Okay. Is every, is everybody okay with that? So use this criteria.
So, use this criteria. You got that, Dr. Heron?
Yep, I can certainly bring forward the same criteria for your consideration for vote or not vote at the next meeting. Obviously, even moving students around all of our schools, if we move anybody around, they're going to be in the ninety, in the ninety percent already.
Right.
And so, that is a data point that we know right now.
But coming to consensus on using the maps just for data, if we, let's move down the road a little bit, let's say, we say, okay, we've seen what that looks like, we have the data to communicate to our funders, and our funders say, we don't have the money, we can't add capacity in the next three years, five years. We have a tough decision to make at that point, and so, I don't want to, I don't want to commit to, as a board, not doing anything when we don't, we, we're making a decision in a funding vacuum. We don't know what, if anything, our funders are willing to do and when. And so, it's...
Can we have the administration have that conversation over the next two weeks to see with, see what our funding partners in the county, in the city, what their understanding is of our high school capacity issues?
Sure, we can direct administration to do that, but as you well know, being on this body, an administrator's recommendation or knowledge doesn't necessarily convey to a board vote.
Well, and the other thing is, you know, we have our constituency, and we also have our, you know, elected official, so we, board members could, what, sorry, oh, sorry. So, we could, yeah, we could, over the next couple of weeks, I could certainly meet with John McLennan, talk about this, start talking about this, you know, we don't have to, it's not a, it's just, and I think Mr. Kelly's right, they do know it's coming down the road, they don't need a crystal ball to see that. But I think, I think it would still be useful and helpful to not wait, which is what has happened in the past sometimes. We wait so long before we start talking to our, our funding partners and, you know, I think talking's good.
So, I think the fourth middle was way too long in coming. It just was. So, and that indecision and the back and forth about, we clearly needed a fourth middle, and yet we didn't have the funding for a fourth middle until it was right. I would hope that we won't be in that position for the future, but I don't have a crystal ball. So, I agree with the chair that having more information is better, moving forward to talk to the, to our funding partners.
Not to mince words, but we did have a fourth middle in 2009, but then we had budget cuts that we had to close one.
This is our second fourth middle.
It's our second try to a fourth middle.
That's what I was talking about. It was a swing. It was a swing, so, you know, it, yeah, no.
And I do think our...
Mr. Kelly, you're absolutely right. That's why, you know, a few years before that, that's why we had to stop buying school buses, because we had a big, there's another big slash, so, yeah.
And textbooks and a list of things.
But I do think our constituency is fully engaged at this point, and I hope that continues, because I think that's, maybe that's the push we need to help us get what we need in our school district.
Okay, so, so we agree that the criteria would be the same in a motion, and then, to your point, Mrs. Young and Dr. Beers and Mr. Kelly, in two weeks when we next meet, there may or may not be a motion, to your point, you know, based on, but, but again, that's for a discussion at the next, at the next meeting, but right now, middle school and high school will look the same, although at the high school level, when the maps come out, I think the impact on longevity, feasibility, I guess is what you call it, is going to be really important to know. So, the consultant and Dr. Heron are going to take, after that, if we vote on criteria at the next meeting, they'll take that information and make maps. Once the maps are released, we'll have a public input session, at least on middle school, maybe not in high school, depending on how things move forward. Dr. Heron, can you tell us the dates, do you happen to have those dates? Do we, for the, are we public, do we have public dates for the maps yet, or no, are we not, have we not determined, sorry?
Not yet.
Okay.
Everything, all the dates of public forums to look at maps and everything will be on the webpage.
When they're confirmed.
On the redistricting webpage.
And we'll push that out when they're confirmed.
Once it's confirmed and locations are confirmed, we'll push it far and wide.
Okay. And to reiterate, we will continue to discuss both middle and high school separately from, you know, here on out, because they are separate issues, and we will, you know, take action on middle school in early 2018, and high school is to be determined. So, is that right, everybody? Okay. I just, I want to thank you, Mr. Leopold, for your, for your work and working with staff. I also want to thank James City County GIS, I understand that they were very helpful in providing data to you so that you could do your job, and all the public, members of the public who spoke, and who wrote, and who called, and emailed, and tweeted, and Facebooked, thank you, please keep it up. Your input is so critical, we cannot do our jobs well without you, so please keep it coming. And anyway, so thank you, everyone. Does anyone have anything else about redistricting before we move on?
I think, I do think, though, that as we start developing budgets for next year, we really need to look at resource allocation and, and put in our money where our needs are.
Right. Yes, I think that's...
Because they are kind of the same conversation.
They're not, yeah, they're certainly related. Okay, so, 7.03 appointments to Advisory Committee. The, every year at this time, the school board, the school board appoints to its three advisory committees, Special Education Advisory Committee, Student Advisory Committee, and 21st Century Career Readiness Advisory Committee. And so, the board is taking applications under advisement and will make appointments at the next meeting. So, does anyone have any questions about that? And that will go on the next agenda. Okay, excellent. That brings us to 8.01 WJCC 2017, 2018 Equity Series Number One, SOL Performance Review, Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's been a lot of discussion tonight about equity and about student achievement, and this is the first in our equity series for this year, when we're going to present our SOL performance review to you, and really present the areas in detail where we do have gaps in performance and where we've work to do. And I'm delighted to present Mr. Thorpe and Dr. Carroll, who will be making the presentation this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. This evening, Dr. Carroll and I are looking forward to presenting this past year's SOL performance outcomes, and as part of this evening's presentation, we will share the data and a few of our approaches to support students. As with last year's Equity Series, these regular presentations to you will outline how we are working to provide students with what they need in order to be successful. We'll start with accreditation. All WJCC schools are fully accredited, and we are one of 65 school divisions in the Commonwealth with this distinction. As in previous years, we benchmark our performance with school divisions with similar enrollment, budget, and demographics, and these five school divisions are Augusta County, Bedford County, Falkere County, Frederick County, and Rockingham County. School accreditation for this year is based on pass rate targets in English, which combine reading and writing, as well as mathematics, social studies, and science, and you can see those pass rate targets right there. Now, in the next five slides, we're going to show our divisions' pass rates in each of the major SOL content areas. As you view this data, you'll see that our pass rates are relatively consistent with many reporting groups, while there are really notable drops. What's clear to us are the apparent gaps in pass rates between reporting groups. This continues to drive our work. You'll also see that our pass rates in many subjects and groups compare favorably against the state average. We'll start with reading. In looking at the trend of the pass rates for SOL reading, you can see that performance from 2016 to 2017 is relatively consistent across reporting groups. The writing SOL scores are comprised of the grade eight writing SOL and the end-of-course writing SOL. While we are comparing different sets of students, the drops in pass rates in the Hispanic and limited English proficient reporting groups are concerning to us. Mathematics SOLs are given at the end of grades three through eight. In addition to these scores, student pass rates on the Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II SOLs count toward the school division's overall math pass rates. Lower pass rates across reporting groups have triggered the way that we plan and assess with mathematics. We have more details on this later in the presentation. Social Studies SOLs are given at the end of Grade Four for Virginia Studies and Grade Eight with Civics. In addition to these scores, student pass rates on the Geography, Virginia U.S. History, World History I, and World History II SOLs count toward the school division's overall social studies pass rate. Again, we look at that comparison from 2016 to 2017 on the far right with a limited English proficient reporting group. The Science SOLs are given at the end of Grade Five and Grade Eight. In addition to these scores, student pass rates on the Earth Science, Chemistry, and Biology SOLs count toward the school division's overall Science SOL pass rate. A deeper dive into the data shows that pass rates for Grade Five Science and Biology dropped both in the state and WJCC from 2016 to 2017. Pass rates in Chemistry improved from 93% to 97% from 2016 to 2017.
Can you say that one more time, Scott?
Sure. Yep, I'll start back with a deeper dive into the data.
Okay.
Shows that pass rates for Grade Five Science and Biology fell for both the state and WJCC from 2016 to 2017. Pass rates in Chemistry improved from 93% to 97%.
Did those tests, did those tests change?
I'm not aware of those tests changing.
Were there less children or students taking the Chemistry?
We can get that information to you. I do not have that information.
I think the test changes every year, they don't give the same test.
Sometimes there's a significant...
There's a standard change.
No, no.
Right, 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 right.
I'm getting, no. Okay, thank you.
Now, while there are approaches and plans in place to support students with every content area, we want to share just a few strategies in one subject area, and that's mathematics, and two reporting groups, and that's with our English learners and students with disabilities. We'll start with mathematics. In mathematics, we're utilizing data conversations after each unit assessment to measure how effective the initial teaching strategies are that we employed with that skill. We are also offering professional development for teachers on the new 2016 Math Standards of Learning revisions. At the school level, teachers and teams and departments will be supported differently for lesson planning to ensure that we capitalize on first-time learning. At the primary level, we have a new online math learning system for kindergarten and first-grade skills, and that's going to be able to measure and monitor the progress of how well students are acquiring early numeracy and readiness skills. And then also, we are offering a new course, Algebra I, Sequence One. Supporting our students who...
Algebra, I'm sorry, go ahead. Algebra One, Sequence One, so that takes Algebra One and spreads it over a longer period, so Algebra One is...
I'll bring up Dr. Carroll to answer the Algebra One question.
Just, I think I know, but I want to make sure I know.
And I'm still, I'm not the math expert, but I'm pinching here on math. So, Algebra One, Sequence One is, we go into that, and it's the foundations of algebra, and so, now in the middle school, they can either take it over three years and begin that in the eighth grade year, the first year of algebra, and then they'll continue next year. At high school, for the first time, we'll be implementing the Sequence Two.
Thank you.
Depending on what they take at the middle school.
So, that's just an option, so then, there are also students that can just do what they, what they have been doing, and just go right into algebra?
So, I guess the easiest way to explain this, for on-grade-level students in sixth grade, all students that are on-grade level take what we call Foundations of Algebra One, Sequence One. Then, on-grade-level students have the option in seventh grade to either take Foundations of Algebra Three or Foundations of Algebra Two. If I'm an on-grade-level student in seventh grade and I've taken Three, I move to Algebra in eighth grade. All students are moving to Algebra in eighth grade. Then, if I've done Sequence Two in seventh grade, I move to Sequence Three in eighth grade. Got it?
Got it.
Yeah.
I think the movement forward is based on the learning needs of the students, that's the key concept here.
Okay, so I'm just, sorry, sorry. So, you've got, I'm just going from my, my kids, they went algebra to geometry, right? Wasn't that what it was? Or was it geometry?
Right, so it's my understanding, since I have a sixth grader...
It slows the year down.
There's, I have a sixth grader and an eighth grader, so the option is still Algebra One Part One, or Algebra One Part Two, or you can take Algebra One. Is that, isn't that currently, like, you can take it over two years, or you can take it in one year?
The change is, and again, I'm new to the middle school, so I'll hesitate if I'm saying this wrong, but the change is that there's no more Math Eight. All students will be enrolled in Algebra in eighth grade.
The Part One?
Either a year-long earning a credit in eighth grade, or a, we can't call it Part One, the DOE frowns upon that. So, Sequence One or Sequence, and then they'll take Sequence Two as freshmen.
Right, so they either they complete Algebra in one year and exit elementary, middle school with one credit, or they begin it in middle school and complete it in high school as a freshman, and earn that credit once they're a freshman.
Or it's, would be possible for students who still need more extended time to start over and take all of Algebra One again as freshmen in high school.
If they started Sequence One, they wouldn't finish Sequence Two as a ninth grader?
That's some of the proposals being looked at for implementation next year. Because they haven't completed the course, so there are variations of the course that could be proposed. Again, trying to provide lots of options for our math learners. I think that would be the emphasis tonight, is that we're looking at this.
Thank you.
Put some problems on the board that you can solve.
Yes. Thank you. It's very clear now.
I'm happy I could assist.
Me too, Dr. Carroll, thanks.
Can I ask my question? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Sandy. Hi, I have a question. Can you go back one slide to that online learning for K through one student? What was entailed in that? Because most K-1 students need concrete objects. If that's online, are they going to have concrete objects sitting next to them? I'm concerned about this.
No, these are going to be, these are going to be pictorial representations, but they will have a listening and audio component with that, so to make certain that their mathematics reasoning is assessed, not just their, their reading. But, yes, we do value manipulatives in the primary grades.
Is, thank you, is this, is this an assessment tool?
It is not, it's actually for, it's actually for progress monitoring, it does assess students along the way, but it's game-based, it's called Dream Box.
I would really like to see this, but I'm very concerned about jumping from concrete to abstract learning for K-1 students. So, you're talking to a K-1... So you're, you're talking to a K one, two, three teacher here. That bothers.
Yeah, but most five-year-olds, they're going like this anyway.
Oh, except they still, except you, except they are not getting math concepts.
Maybe you can send us a link to.
Yes, please.
Absolutely, and I think that an invitation to, to see it in action, we can, we can make that happen.
Oh, I'm, I'm going to hold you to that.
Yes, ma'am.
Just for clarification, the math, not all of the math is going to be taught online. They will, they'll continue to have manipulatives as well, right?
Oh, absolutely.
This is just one aspect of what we're doing.
I know, it's, if kids don't get it with concrete things, doing that is going to not be helpful. In fact, I've worked with students who think that that little picture in the block in the, in, on a, on a math book is what a cube looks like. And so when you give them a cube, they go, what is this? So I'm very concerned about this, so.
Thank you. Sure. And we're moving on to English learners. As we said before, supporting our kids who are, are learning English is a true priority for us, it remains a priority for us. We are increasing our service for schools with higher populations of English learners and expanding our high school delivery model. Additionally, we're providing extended direct core language instruction services to newly arrived English learners at the high school level, and that's through the Newcomers Academy. Finally, in an effort to increase teacher capacity, we are broadening training for classroom teachers in the Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol, or PSYOP, as well as in approaches to planning and instruction and assessing English learners at the secondary level. And again, with that last piece, what we're, what we're doing is we're building capacity in the classroom teachers.
Just to clarify, that Newcomers Academy is where all the new students, could you explain, and they're all sent to Lafayette High School, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. So the Newcomers Academy housed at Lafayette High, we've got approximately 90 students there at this point in time, and continues to emphasize the conceptual and fundamental language of literacy and numeracy. And students in the Newcomers Academy engage in highly scaffolded, language-rich activities that encourage language expression across the four domains, and that's reading, writing, listening and speaking. And opportunities for daily small group instruction and independent practice and guided practice anchor this model.
And then are they, are they also in all the other classes? You know, they, they participate in special things, but then they're brought into the regular classrooms?
Yes, ma'am.
Because Newcomers Academy is just for the two periods a day, right? So is that what I understand?
That's my understanding.
So they're transported just for this to Lafayette, but they do the other subjects in their home school?
Thank you, that was, that was not clear.
They, they don't join Lafayette. They're, they're there programmatically, it's like taking an extra subject that's not offered in another school or a program. So they come to the school for this intensive English instruction and they're in their own school the rest of the day.
So we could do something like that along with Project Lead the Way, for example? That's, that's where I'm kind of going with this, that you've got special programs that other people could perhaps do at War Hill. But I know that's another.
Pendant transportation.
So I have a question about the drop in the results for the English language learners. Two questions that are related. One, when we have a student come to us who's in, who's, for whom English is their second language and they may not be literate in their own language, when they come to us, how long do we have with them before we're responsible for making sure that they pass an SOL? So that's, that's my first question. Related to that is, do the declines that we've experienced most recently, in, in your view, are they connected to the growth of the, of the population that we're serving in terms of having to accommodate more students and, and, and be responsible to make sure that they are learning? So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. That was a question that we talked about recently with Dr. Pat Tillman, who is our Coordinator for World Languages. And not only have we seen an increase of students who are identified as English learners, but also an increase of those students who identify as Ls at more intensive levels of need, basically our Level One and Level Two identified Ls. So we figure, we, we believe that that is part of the drops and that some of the areas that we have, or some of the strategies that we're employing will help to address those needs.
And how long do we have with a student who comes to us at a Level One or a Level Two before, we need to make sure that student is really ready to demonstrate their proficiency via an SOL?
Madam Chair, I want to make sure I get that information right. I'll, I'll get that information to you.
Mr. Paula might be able to help.
Good evening. If the student transfers us, to us from another school division, then we're responsible immediately for their SOLs. If they're coming from another country, they haven't had school, we have one year. But pretty much if our students come to us, we're responsible for their SOL grades.
So, so they could come one week before you do your SOL testing? And they have to sit through the SOL testing?
And other systems may not have had the intensive programs that we're putting in place, so they may come at a, at a huge disadvantage and then be counted in our schools.
And we have the additional challenge of interrupted language and interrupted schooling. So we have students that will be in a school for several months, they'll leave, they'll go to another school, go to their home country, come back. So there are multiple challenges that we're facing with our population as it grows.
Thank you, Mr. Paula. And the other reporting group about which we wanted to speak tonight is our students with disabilities. And in an effort to further support students with learning disabilities, we're investing in teachers with professional development. This professional development is on specially-designed instruction on how to provide it across a variety of instructional settings. And in order to make this planning for tailored instruction more efficient for teachers, we've updated the Elementary Reading Resource Map for instructional resources. Furthermore, we've increased the frequency with which we monitor the performance of the students who are participating in the Wilson Reading Program. And finally, our school teams and support staff are analyzing the services that students are receiving and then realigning these services based on student performance outcomes along the way to ensure appropriate services and time are in place for each student. At this time, I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Carol, and he's going to talk to us
Thank you, Mr. Thorpe. There are many other supports designed to improve learning and achievement outcomes. These include how we are rethinking assessments here in WJCC. One way that we have done this is through the deliberate reduction in assessments that resulted from the work of our Purposeful Assessment Task Force. For grades two through eight, and also including Algebra One in high school, the time that students are spending on school division assessments is at least 25% less this school year as opposed to last year. And then at the high school level, the challenge of verified credit has motivated our efforts. Some students repeat the same SOL assessments multiple times, and at times, a single assessment has substantially delayed students from earning a high school diploma. I'd like to share one such story with you tonight.
I had to retake the reading SOL multiple times due to the fact that I was getting one question away every time, five times. So that would really stop me from graduating into 2014. That whole process was bleak due to the fact, it made me feel like, okay, I came this far and now like all my hard work just went to waste. Worked for 12 years from elementary to high school and then get to high school, worked four years, and then not be able to walk with my class and even get my diploma was a very tough situation for me. Like I felt like everything I worked for just went down the drain. I kept coming to school to retake the SOL every time that it was offered, and I just kept persevering, knowing that I was going to get it. So to my family and friends and also to my school administrators, they didn't allow me to give up, and that's what kept me to keep going through. I had to retake the reading SOL.
VDOE has allowed the Work Keys Writing Test as a substitute assessment for several years, and our division has always used it as a last resort for seniors that had previously failed the SOL multiple times to earn their verified credit. Inspired by multiple student stories such as CJ's, in 2015, the War Hill High School Planning for Innovation Grant Team decided to look at assessments and possible alternatives to assessments. The Pathways Project at War Hill proposed and received permission from VDOE to use the Work Keys Writing as an initial test in lieu of the SOL Writing Assessment. As the Pathways Team prepared for implementation of this change, it initiated conversations across several departments throughout WJCC. Others here wondered if such a shift would benefit students beyond pathways and expressed an interest in this idea. Last fall, a WJCC team was established to determine criteria on who could participate in Work Keys Writing Assessment instead of the SOL Writing Assessment. The criteria established were failed an eighth grade SOL with a 350 or below, they were an ELL with a score of 3.5 or lower, they had this accommodation written into their IAP, they received on the WJCC English Division, English Writing Prompt, a six or below, and failed a, the Writing SOL previously in the fall. As a result, WJCC gave 280 students took the Work Keys Writing Assessment as an initial test, and 265 of those students passed last school year. We'd like to share one such student story with you tonight.
The Work Keys Writing Test, after I had taken it, it was just like a, a huge relief, just knowing that I was one step closer to being graduated. Until that point, I felt like I was like failing every test that I was taking, like I wasn't getting anywhere with anything, like I felt like I was learning in class, my grades were good in class, but then when it came to testing, it was like, hmm, why isn't Sean, you know, getting anywhere? And I don't know if that's just because the assistance with the teacher being there in class or not, but knowing that I passed the Work Keys, it was like, okay, I can do it. I can pass the class and take a test as long as I don't overthink it. It's a big mental game. The environment of the Writing Keys was so much more relaxed, I want to say, like, you know, the SOL, everyone gets so worked up over them because it's SOL, you know, the title, the name is there. But it felt like I wasn't as pressured. I don't, I don't really know how to explain it, but it, it was better for me. Like, at first when I was going into it, I felt like I was taking like this test because I wasn't smart enough. But it's just worded differently. It's not, it's still equivalent to the SOL, like I, it didn't make me feel dumber because of the vocabulary, the grammar they were using. Like it was, it was just more relaxed, so I felt like I did better.
So again, we just wanted to highlight some of those areas that we're rethinking assessments and continue to address some of the areas that we've highlighted in the report that we presented tonight.
Is it possible for us to actually take one test or the other? I'm, no, I'm just, I'm curious as to what the difference is between, between the business Work Keys Writing and, I'm just curious, or even to be able to see what it is. Is that something that?
I could answer that question generally for you. The, the writing assessment typically, I think for a high school student, takes approximately two hours, two to three hours, depending on the, the prompt there. And there's also a multiple choice grammar component, so it's a, can be a two-day test at times.
The SOLs?
The SOL. The Work Keys Business is again focused on workplace readiness, business, preparation for the career, and it's a 30-minute time test.
Does the community college system use the Work Keys?
I'm unsure. Actually, I take that back. Yes, Work Keys Reading and Writing can be accepted by the community college as a placement test. It's not, but that's again, one of the reasons we, we looked at it. So we're getting kind of bang for our buck with an assessment.
Dr. Carol, could you tell, I, I know that the state's involved in developing alternative assessment, that they're, I don't know if that, if they ever got the big grant they were working on. Where, where, how are we fitting into that? Are we, is that part of what will become our assessment sort of strategies in the future? How that, how that's going to work? Because it is different kind of assessment.
I think we're working throughout the organization in developing alternative assessments, and there's been a lot of work generically on assessment literacy. And it started with some very basic assessments, but now we're looking, we're actually developing performance-based assessments as well at various, various levels. And a lot of our staff have been involved in the state training and gone to professional development right by the state. And yes, they did receive the grant and they are pushing alternative assessments out across the system.
That, I just think it's important for the, this is a really, it's nationwide sort of movement, that it's, I think it's important that, you know, parents and especially parents have a, you know, have, have an awareness of how this is actually different and why it's important that it's different from what we have traditionally done in the area of assessment in the past. That's, that's, that's what I was asking about that.
Any questions about? It's a lot, it's a lot of information to take in.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing it.
Thank you. I look forward to studying this. I'm sure I will have questions.
All right, please send them our way.
Yes, and anything else?
A few years ago, they gave us a fifth grade math SOL.
Yeah, I remember that.
That was horrifying.
Oh, I know.
We didn't do good.
Yeah, well.
Well.
See? See? I'm an engineer, you know, so. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, that, thank you very much. That brings us to policies. 9.01 revised policy, JHH Student Welfare Suicide.
Ms. Parker is here to answer any questions.
I'd like to ask a question. Are we going, I have two questions. First of all, why, why didn't we just adopt the Virginia Board of Education Suicide Prevention Guidelines as our policy?
Excellent question. Ours, a committee actually formed our policy, and those were pieces that we looked at as well, and we did incorporate pieces of that into our policy. We absolutely did. We also used a lot of other best practice and current best practice in regards to school-based intervention, prevention and postvention as well. There were a couple differences, two specific differences I can talk about as to why we chose to address them in a different manner. While I can't speak to the origins of the VSBA policy, current best practice tells us that in a school, it recommends a student identified by school person as being an imminent risk of suicide, that they be immediately referred by, to a trained licensed school professional for risk assessment as well as referral. That is not mentioned in the VSBA policy as it currently stands. Additionally, it also recommend that the trained licensed school professional or administrator make contact with the student's parent or guardian. That is also not the recommendation of the current VSBA. They have any and all school personnel making that contact with the parents. So that's one difference. Another difference was in regards to language regarding abuse or neglect. And so the Virginia Department of Social Services actually requires any report of suspected abuse or neglect. That's been. suspected abuse or neglect that's been screened through CPS to be designated either a Response One, Response Two, or Response Three. A Response One is within 24 hours, it would need to be addressed. And for a lot of our students, we don't have 24 hours who are actively at risk for suicide. And so we needed to provide our counselors who have students sitting in front of them with an additional opportunity. So in addition to contacting CPS about the abuse or neglect, they can also then contact the SRO or local law enforcement to assist them. And those are again, only in the cases of students who are an imminent risk of suicide as a result of parental abuse or neglect. So those were two of the main differences. We wanted to give really clear, specific guidelines. We actually collaborated with both of our Williamsburg and James City County Child Protective Service Departments on those to make sure that our procedures aligned with their protocol as well, which is where sometimes we get hung up a little bit.
Thank you, you answered both questions. Thank you.
Oh, great.
So in short, theirs is antiquated and ours is better?
Yeah, and I think all of the details, how this is administered are in guidelines, not in the policy. And so the details that Ms. Parker was giving are very clearly led out in our guidelines that are associated with this policy. And I'll be providing a copy of those to the school board as we normally do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Parker. Next is revised policy IGBG, homebound instruction.
There she is. Good evening, Madam Chair.
School board members and Dr. Harren. Thank you for this opportunity to bring to you suggested revisions for policy IGBG, homebound instruction. These revisions have been reviewed by our attorney and also reviewed by the school board policy subcommittee. The policy revisions reflected really an alignment, a better alignment to the SBA policy and WJCC public school practices. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Fowler, do you happen to know, just for our information, how many students in general we are providing homebound services to, just so we can get a sense of?
Just homebound or do you want both homebound and home-based?
Sure, yes.
Okay, so I have the number of students we served in both 2015, 16, and 2016, 17. So I brought you a comparison. We served 69 students for homebound instruction and that totaled 2,919 instructional hours, costing the school division $72,272.98. In 2016, 17, we served 59 students, 10 fewer students than the previous year. However, the instructional time increased to 2,974 hours of instruction, which cost the school division $73,634.75. Home-based instruction in 2015, 16, we served 76 students. Total instructional hours were 1,100.25 hours, costing the division $27,241.64. And the following year, we did much better. We had 41 students for a total of 871 instructional hours, costing the division $21,565.52. I will remind you that some of the homebound instruction is reimbursed to the school division, but it's a very small percentage. I think it's like 4% or something like that.
Like everything else?
Yes.
Can you give us a sense of what typically would, you know, some examples of what might result in?
Yes, many, many things. For homebound instruction, I'm going to give you what we mainly see. 41% of our students receiving homebound instruction in year 15, 16 were for mental health issues, depression, suicide, post-traumatic stress disorder, and so on. We had kids who had surgery, fractures, the typical GI issues, a couple of kids with cancer, some pregnancies, although the numbers are low, immune deficiencies, and then just various other things like eye injuries or things like that, concussions and things like that. Last year, we had 37% being served for mental health issues and then it dropped significantly down to the other things that we see, surgery, fractures, neuro. And those are a lot of concussion, post-concussion syndromes we're seeing more of, so we're having them on homebound for, for brain rest, which is difficult to provide homebound services when they're supposed to be resting their brains, but we do the best we can. Again, cancer, pregnancy, immune deficiencies, and children with renal disease.
Trends overall, are you seeing this grow or stay steady?
You know, over the years that I've been working with homebound, obviously, when I started in this position almost 17 years ago, homebound in general has just gone steadily upward. And I see a trend in the increase in mental health concerns over the years. It's just very significant and unfortunate, but it's the world we live in now, so, yes. And those are the ones that are really hard to get back into school.
Well, I wanted to bring the attention, the school board's attention to line 23, which says it must also include the transition plan to return to school. And I think that that is an important addition to the policies.
Yes.
That when you're talking about homebound now, there's, it's going to be in our policy to actually have that transition plan to bring them back to school.
And that's been a problem because it's never, was intended to be a permanent placement for a child because we can't, it's not a replacement for their school education. So we really need to work with the providers, the healthcare providers, and the school team to develop a plan in which they can return to school, part-time to full-time or whatever we can look at. But I think that's an important piece of this process.
Any other questions for Ms. Fowler? Thank you very much.
Ms. Fowler is staying with us?
Oh, sorry. If you don't mind.
So yeah, the next is 9.03 revised policy JHCC/GBEC, communicable diseases. Yes, that would be your, yes.
That would be mine too. Again, we have made those revisions that have been reviewed by our attorney and the school board policy subcommittee, and they directly reflect the language in the VSBA policy. So any questions there? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That moves us to item 10.01 Personnel Actions. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the personnel actions as presented this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Sarza, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 10.02, Release from Compulsory Attendance Case Number R18-03. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve release from compulsory attendance case number R18-03.
Second? Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Sarza, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Motion passes. That brings us to item 11.01, Board Member Comments. Ms. Onby, would you like to say anything today?
Yes, I would. I just would like to thank the community for their continued patience with our bus shortage. We have learned as a board that this is not just specific to Williamsburg, it's a regional issue, it's a national issue. And so just continued patience as we hire bus drivers. Wanted to congratulate Stonehouse for being named a Blue Ribbon School and working so hard to achieve closure of that achievement gap that we've talked about tonight. I wanted to thank each school and their guidance department as they bring awareness to students with disabilities for Disability Awareness Month in October, as well as bullying prevention, two very important things to bring awareness to. As Madam Chair mentioned earlier, I wanted to thank the community for your continued feedback. I do read all of your email and listen to folks in the line at the grocery store and so encourage folks to continue to talk to us. It does help us to listen to your perspective. I hope the community has had a chance to attend one of our high school football games. I've had an opportunity to attend War Hill and Jamestown, no, War Hill and Lafayette and enjoy the football game, but I also really liked the band. Yeah, and so encourage folks to come and watch the halftime show. I'm eager to see all of our new band uniforms, so those have not been rolled out yet. So I have not seen Jamestown's game yet, but I'm eager to see their halftime show. And so our, the band booster, no, the athletic booster president at Lafayette has done a really good job this year of, of marketing the senior card, which my father has this year. So if you're a senior in the community of age 65 or over, go to your local high school and get your golden ticket. Isn't it 65? 65 and over, yes, you can attend any Bay Rivers District sporting events, like my dad's at a volleyball game tonight. So would encourage folks to do that so that you stay connected to our schools and have an opportunity to see our phenomenal bands and our phenomenal football teams.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, a couple of things. I also very much want to congratulate Stonehouse for becoming, which I believe is the second Blue Ribbon School in the Williamsburg, Tink County School System, which is an awesome award and I know richly deserved and I know that they look forward to going up to the White House to be recognized for that. I too would like to thank all of you who have called, emailed, left notes on the outside of my mailbox. And I really do appreciate that because it really, it helps to reinforce the fact that so many people in the community really are, you know, really have gotten behind their schools and want to support what the schools are doing and I just, and as I say to many, many folks, that rest assured that your thoughts and your concerns will always receive thoughtful reading and consideration on my part, always. The other, what's the other? Oh, yeah. I think we have these, this is the beginnings of the back-to-school night to all our schools and I, it's not tonight, but I think, I think the first one, I think is actually tomorrow and I can't remember, but that I very much would encourage parents to take advantage of that as they come up over the next month or so. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mr. Kelly?
I really have nothing to add to the detailed and complete comments of Dr. Beers and Mrs. Onby.
Excellent. Mrs. Young?
I'm sorry if I can stop laughing. No, I enjoy their comments. I mean, they're complete, so they leave little for the rest of the staff to see. The Village, I enjoyed my visit with the Village a week ago, many nights. It's one of the community organizations which I fully support their mission. I think what they're doing is amazing and I compliment them on that and I do plan to continue going. I enjoyed my meeting last night with Green Springs West. I want to compliment that neighborhood. They, they, I didn't get stoned and so I appreciate that. They were, they were lovely and good questions that I had been given in advance. And I too am reading all of the comments and share the concerns and understand them, not only as a board member, but as a parent and grandparent, because I think, I think they're legitimate concerns. Congratulate Stonehouse, I won't go on. I do want to say something about the campaign for bullying. I hope that as that campaign goes forward in our schools, that students will start to recognize the need for being able to listen to other students without becoming upset and angry and to share concern for them because it's, high school's rotten, it's hard. I'm sorry. It is one of the hardest things that kids go through and you think about it, even as adults, I've talked to adults that still remember their high school days and not with fondness. And so I want kids that go to high school to enjoy their experience and to remember them with fondness. And to, along with Dr. Beers, encourage our parents to attend open houses.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Ms. Hummel?
I, I really don't have anything to say to add to what everyone else has said, so congratulations to Stonehouse. Go to a football game. Go to back-to-school night. I love our comments from everyone. It's all good.
Mrs. Taylor?
I agree, there's not much left to say, except I have to say congratulations to Stonehouse, of course.
Of course you do, yes. Is this Ms. Berta's last meeting? No, okay.
No, I believe she's helping with the capital improvement plan at the next meeting.
Thank you. Okay, I won't say goodbye to you though, right now. I really appreciated Dr. Harren's comments on farm-to-school and although this is farm-to-school month, our school division has produce from local farms every month, so I would strongly encourage everybody to go eat in our cafeterias because it's really good, yummy, and they, the butter, the spaghetti squash, I understand this past week was supposed to be exquisite. And so anyway, I strongly recommend it, it's good stuff. And then the kids get a sticker when they try it, so in that sticker, they'll do anything for a sticker, right? Especially at elementary school. But, and then I also, I did want to thank again everybody's comments and just thank the board because I know every single one of you reads every single comment. And so I've talked to each of you and listened to you, share your experiences with talking to people out in the community and I'm very impressed and grateful for the time and energy you put into that. And then also I want to thank Stone, congratulate Stonehouse and the principal, you know, great school, great leadership. We know those are two hand-in-hand. The principal, Ms. White, is local. She was raised here, so I, I hope she went to WJCC. Did she? Okay, so I just think that's a real six-thank you. I was like, I hope she didn't go to York County. But anyway, she's one of ours and she went to school here and came back and she's leading the school and so I think that's really quite remarkable. And so congratulations to her and thank you to her as well. Anyway, that's all I have for that. 12.0, anything else before I move on? 12.01 upcoming events, we have, Ms. Onby has a CAC meeting on the 12th of October at 6:30 in the James City County Recreation Center on Long Hill Road. And Mrs. Taylor and Ms. Hummel have a policy committee meeting on the, on October 18th at 4:00 here in the annex. And then upcoming meetings, we have a closed session on the 17th of October at 6:00 PM in city council chambers in the Striker Center, followed by a regular meeting at 6:30 also in city council, that's in city council chambers. On the 14th of November, we have a closed session at 6:00 here in the annex and then that will be followed by a public hearing on the capital improvement plan again. We have two of those, I guess, currently, or, great, that's at 6:30. And then followed by work session and action items, so it'll be a little bit of a repeat of tonight. And with that, we will set the agenda for the next regular meeting. Ms. Sarza, you have all of that. We have the items we discussed tonight in addition to a few resolutions and our regular finances and personnel. So anything else? Are we good? All right, with that, the meeting is adjourned.